Manhattan Neighborhood Network in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, the Amsterdam News and Gotham Gazette is pleased to bring you a debate among candidates running to fill the seat in City Council District Number 9. I'm Eleanor Tatum, publisher and editor-in-chief of the New York Amsterdam News. The New York City primaries will be held on Tuesday, September 12th for offices from mayor through city council. The winners of the primaries like this one in Council District 9 will be the Democratic nominees in November's general election. With approximately 160,000 residents, District 9 represents West Harlem, Hamilton Heights, Manhattanville and Morningside Heights. We ask the candidates able to join us today to keep their responses to a minute and any rebuttals they have to 30 seconds. The candidates are seated by random drawing. Starting from my left, we have Marvin Holland, Cordell Clear, Bill Perkins, Tyson Lord Gray and Julius Tajadine. Welcome, candidates, and thank you for being here today. My first question goes to Julius Tajadine. What are your specific qualifications to represent and serve this community in the City Council for District 9?
Well, I've been very involved for many years, over 16 years in Harlem, and I've been involved with the community boards of Harlem, Community Board 10, Community Board 9, and a little bit of Community Board 11. And many issues that have come to the community, I learned how to deal with these problems, you know, by being actively involved in the community boards. I served on different committees. I was appointed to various committees such as housing, land use, education and libraries, you name it, and I've been effective. So, my results have made me believe that I can, you know, do further as a city council person.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson Lord Gray, same question?
Thank you. And, excuse me. Good morning to you, Eleanor, and thank you to MNN for the opportunity to be here and a part of the conversation this morning. So, to answer the question, I have a wealth of experience that I bring to the table, over 20 years of activism and work in the community. I volunteer with several organizations in Harlem, Harlem Grown, We Act, various nonprofits that are doing work in the community. I'm also a professor at NYU and at Pace University in environmental studies and sciences. So, I bring a level of expertise in environmental issues and environmental concerns that definitely affect Harlem residents. We understand that oftentimes low-income communities are disproportionately affected by environmental risk and environmental burdens. In addition to that, I have a nonprofit organization that I founded myself, Green Community Vision. We do workshops in the community as well as conferences and partner with nonprofit faith-based organizations. And so, I've been extremely entrenched in the community and doing work in the community in various capacities over the last years. And so, now I'm bringing that experience and that skill set into this particular space.
And, Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you and MNNN for this opportunity for us to share our candidacy for the City Council. And I'm honored to be amongst these other candidates who I more or less know by virtue of the work that they've done in the neighborhood. My candidacy, I believe, is formidable by virtue of the track record that we've been able to establish in the neighborhood as a member of the City Council presently, as well as in the past, as well as the opportunities I've been able to serve the neighborhood on a state level as well as a state senator. So, I've returned to the council because having seen both avenues of opportunity to serve, I realized that the one that provides the most opportunity to take care of the needs of the neighborhood and provide the kind of accessibility that the neighborhood would like of an elected official is working on a local level. So, I've returned to continue working in the City Council in terms of legislation, in terms of accessibility, and I look forward to this discussion on our merits and our vision for our community.
Thank you. Cordell Clear?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Eleanor, for having us. What best prepares me for this job is the fact that I am a lifelong resident of Harlem. I am someone who has lived, worshipped, raised a family during a period when it wasn't so attractive to be in this community. And in that time, I had a child affected by the devastating effects of lead poisoning and was able to work with a coalition of people citywide, in Harlem and around New York City, and even nationally, to fight for better protections for our children. And in that experience, I also was able to work for the former council member and former state senator and hear even more concerns and fight for even more change in my community. I think my best preparation is the fact that I was raised and groomed by the people of Harlem, who always were never shy to tell me what was wrong, what was needed, and I got the opportunity through working in that office to help bring results for them and was effective in doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Marvin Holland?
First of all, thank you for having me here this morning at MN Network. What makes me qualified for this position is, at my core, for the last 27 years, I've been a transit worker. And so, I know everyday working families' problems. But for the past seven years, I've been the political director of the Transport Workers' Union, the largest transit union in the country with 42,000 members. And I've learned how to make politics work for my membership. I would like to bring that to Harlem. Every year that I was working in Albany, I was able to pass legislation, even in the dysfunction that is Albany. Therefore, I would like to bring those skills to Harlem. What's need to get things done is the ability to build coalitions and work across lines with other people. I've done that for my career since I've been in politics, and I'll bring that same experience to Harlem. Uniting the community is the number-one thing I feel that's needed in Harlem, as the community is broken politically and the community is not working together. There's an enormous amount of talent in Harlem, but we need to bring it together and get everybody on the same page and working towards the same goals. I can bring those things to Harlem, and I've done that in my entire career, standing up to the powers that be, and Harlem needs to have someone that's going to fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, what do you consider the most pressing needs of District 9? And what would be your first order of business if elected? Let's start with Tyson Lord Gray.
Thank you. So, I think that the most pressing issue that we're facing in New York City really as a whole is affordable housing. Specifically, though, in District 9, we are the second-highest rent increase in the last decade in New York City. So, a lot of our constituents are being pushed out and being priced out. Individuals are unable to find affordable housing. And so, that would be my number-one priority would be to, one, preserve the housing that we currently have. So, we know that over half of all New York renters are a part of the rent stabilization program. And so, making sure that that program has the proper safeguards and that individuals are not being evicted. Over 30% of the evictions that happened last year were individuals who were a part of that program. When I was working with Legal Aid Society, I was a part of the Tenants' Right Project, which actually worked with individuals who had been evicted wrongly by landlords to get them back into their housing, to get those units back under the rent stabilization program, and to get them money that they had perhaps overpaid. And then, the other thing I would want to do is work with other city council members and the mayor to help create new housing opportunities for individuals.
All right. Mr. Perkins, the most pressing needs of the community?
I hesitate to describe the most pressing need because frankly, there are many pressing needs, none of which are second to the other. So, the question of affordability has already been raised, and I'm in support of the need for more affordable housing, not defined by measures that we presently use, but more importantly, defined by what's in people's pockets. Often, we use the term affordability, like beauty, it's in the eye of the beholder. Affordability is in the pocket of the constituency that I represent. So, often, our measures of affordability don't meet that need. So, towards that end, we're going to need to provide more subsidies, more kinds of funding for folks that don't measure up in terms of what's in their pocket to what it costs to actually live in our neighborhood. And so, we get this term called gentrification that is sort of a term that many people in the community are concerned about because it means that they're going to be excluded. So, that is one of the pressing needs. But I also understand the value of public education and the shortcomings that we have presently from that point of view. I don't subscribe to some of the gimmicks that we've been using, so to speak, to address that need because they haven't measured up either. Public education is a very, very important priority of mine.
Okay. Does anyone have another pressing need besides education and housing that they think is paramount in this district?
Yeah, I think it's paramount that we support small businesses and the ability for people to start small businesses. With unemployment where it is, it is really necessary for people to make their own jobs. And it is difficult to afford space, not just for housing, but for commercial as well. And even some of our small businesses right now are struggling to stay above board because it has become, again, so attractive to be in the community and there's so much competition. We have large-name brand stores coming to Harlem and the mom-and-pop, community-owned businesses that I grew up with, you know, the Coplins, the Wilsons, the Wellses, the Georgies, the family businesses, the Bettercrust, the other businesses, people who want to start those businesses now are finding it very difficult to do so. I think that we have to preserve the opportunity for new business growth in Harlem.
All right. So, I'm going to throw this out to everyone. How do we preserve the new business growth in Harlem?
I think one of the things that we have to do is, there has to be some form of commercial rent control. We have to figure out how to have rent control for commercial units. We have to promote more incubator programs for people who are starting businesses from the ground up. A lot of our people, they're very talented, they're entrepreneurs, but the business aspect, the technical aspect of it, they need support, they need help, and government can do that. We can create more opportunities for mothers and women who want to start businesses in our community. And I'd like to, as a city council person, increase initiatives and dollars in that area to make sure that we can do that.
Mr. Tajadine?
Yes. When new businesses or projects come into the community, whether they be from the city or private, we have to tie them into the community sector. So, for example, a developer comes to the community, you know, trying to get more bulk and density, or a free lot, or whatever, and we don't have a tie-in that can benefit us economically. Now, we somewhat succeeded in doing this with the Columbia Expansion Plan. Columbia, they expanded into Manhattanville, and we do have some of that commercial space on that site that will be designated for businesses that are on a certain standard. So, we can do this across the board. We have to rewrite the narratives on some of these things. You know, we're still listening to the same type of talk that doesn't serve us well. So, we have to rewrite what's really in our interest. This is what, if you're coming to us, the city or a private entity, this is what you're going to have to do. We have to tie in what's in our interest with these projects.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Holland, constituent services are a main function of council members' office. Given that we have these pressing needs of housing, education, small business and a myriad of others, what services do you envision to be the most needed and how will you effectively provide those services?
What I would do is take the council office into the community. A lot of times, the community doesn't actually know what the office of the City Council can do. So, I would have several days a week where I go into the community and actually have my office in the community, whether it's in the Polo Grounds or Taft Housing, wherever the needs are needed, I'll bring it into the community. The other thing I want to do is put together an advisory council of community leaders of all ages to talk about what the real issues and problems are in Harlem and work together with the community, have the community governing the community. Lastly, I would bring, one of the big things I would bring into Harlem is participatory budgeting. Giving the community a chance on how they're going to use the budgeting process and the money and the resources is very important in Harlem.
All right. Yes, participatory budgeting is something I was going to get into a little bit later, but since it's been brought up now, I'd like to know all of your feelings on participatory budgeting, and would you all, if elected, participate in the use of participatory budgeting?
I subscribe thoroughly to that. I actually had the opportunity to participate in it in the past, and I think it does democratize the process in such a way that it informs the community about what we are trying to do and what they would like to see done, and opens the door of opportunity for their vision or their ideas to be a part of that ultimate budget. Generally speaking, the community does not have that type of engagement, and very often, it's left to those of us who are on the insiders to make those kind of decisions, whether in one legislative body or another. But that opportunity to get folks involved and engaged in the process with their ideas and with their debate about what they would like to see, whether it's all accepted or not, it nevertheless gives them the opportunity to feel that they're relevant and that the process is directed towards their needs.
Ms. Clear?
I would absolutely engage in participatory budget program. You know, over the years, again, my experience taught me, working in an elected official's office, it is such a tough decision. There are so many needs in the community, and there are so many great organizations and service agencies worthy of it. I think that it is a good opportunity for everyone to sit down and just come up with the best possible scenario at the end of the day and be involved in actually what services hit our community or what services are funded by the discretionary funding, that most of them are very worthy of receiving.
All right. Mr. Gray?
And I would just like to point out that the funds, the half million to a million dollars in discretionary funds, is actually taxpayer money. So, the fact that taxpayers should be able to be a part of the process of redirecting and reinvesting those funds back into the community really should be self-intuitive. Unfortunately, however, District 9 is not a part of that program currently, so perhaps Councilman Perkins can elaborate a little bit on that because we don't currently participate in that program.
Would you like to respond, Mr. Perkins?
That program was born during the period when I was in the council, and whenever the opportunity came to do it, we've done it. So, I don't quite understand what he's alleging because the record speaks for itself.
All right. Mr. Tajadine?
Participatory budgeting, the concept itself is engaging with the community on how your money's going to be spent. And so, whether you give it a title of that or another title, but I'd like to say that Community Board 9, when we struck a community benefits agreement between Columbia University and Manhattanville, in essence, that's what we're doing. We are participating in a great way on how this money, this benefit money, is going to be spent. And so, sometimes, we need to borrow ideas from other community boards and see what they're doing. But we've attempted to do this in Council District 9, and for some reason, it doesn't get off the ground. And that's kind of, the leadership, to some degree, may not be on a city council level, it could even be community board level. You just need very proactive people that can get things done. And I feel that, over the time, I've been very proactive, and I could be proactive in this regard as well.
Thank you very much.
Can I just clarify real quick? You are speaking about the participatory budgeting program that council members sign up for and then their districts vote on the spending of the million dollars discretionary funding. Okay.
All right. Now, we're going to switch gears a little bit. You know, currently, the mayor has called for a 90-day review of all the statues and monuments that in any way may suggest hate or division or racism or antisemitism. Do you support the removal of controversial figures from city parks or public areas? Mr. Tajadine?
You know, that's a very slippery slope because in Brooklyn, for example, the residents there wanted to name Gates Avenue after Sonny "Abudika" Carson, and there was resistance, you know, to that being done by members in the city council. Sonny Carson, in my view, was an American hero. So, I think if we start, we have to really examine, do we want to really do this? Because, you know, I would hate for someone to tell me that Malcolm X, his statue, has to come down because he, you know, supported hate or whatever, and you don't really understand where he was coming from. So, you're going to find the people who are pushing this, their leaders and images of their leaders and so forth might be attacked too. So, you know, it has to be really examined. We shouldn't rush into this because I wouldn't want, you know, my leaders to be attacked.
Mr. Gray?
So, I think the benefit of a democracy is that you have engagement, and you have transparency, and you have openness, and you have conversations. And so, I am completely behind the process of reviewing. I think that it is a healthy process to really ask the question, right? Why is this statue here? What does it symbolize? How are people affected by it mentally, physically? You know, what is their emotional response and reaction to those particular figures and individuals? And those who want it, what does it mean for them, right? And I think that that conversation can only help us understand each other better and have open dialogue. So, I'm in support.
Mr. Perkins?
Generally speaking, you know, we put statues up as some sort of role model, some sort of example of someone that may have done something good and contributed to the well-being of our society, generally speaking. However, historically, we come from an era of racism and sexism and all those other kinds of isms that denigrate our humanity and don't really represent the vision of our community that we intend to have, especially in contemporary times. Because upon review, there's statues out there that have no business being promoted as role models for good behavior or as examples of what's great about this city or about this country. So, we need to review all of that, and we need to recognize where there may have been prejudicial, even racist or sexist or homophobic or whatever you want to decide, individuals who have been put up as heroes that are offensive to the community. So, I have no problem reviewing it and making decisions about whether or not those statues should remain or whether or not, if they remain, their bad behavior, if there is such, is included so that there's no misunderstanding that that individual is someone that should be exemplified.
Ms. Clear?
I completely support a review of the statues and images that we're taught to emulate and that are there for the public to praise. There are people who are not worthy of our praise. Their actions are horrific to some people, some of us. And I think that the community evolves and it grows and it changes, and I think that we are at a point where we do need to look at these images. There are, I mean, just gender equity in terms of who we even create statues for. You know, all these things have to be looked at. So, yes, I support a review of the statues, and I think we just all have to be vigilant and be at the table and let our voices be heard in support or in not support.
Thank you. Mr. Holland?
Yes, I absolutely agree with the reviewing and looking at which statues we may need to remove from around the city. In addition to that, though, I think we have to take a close look at remarks people are making at this time. The fact that Dan Low made those racist remarks, and we haven't really taken a look at it, and he's still sitting at the head of Success Academy. And so, as we're removing these statues and we're reviewing to remove these statues, I think this is a teachable moment in our time and in our history so people can understand the real history of how and who some of these people are in these statues. If we're not going to teach and educate while we're doing this review process, then I think we're just doing a process that's a political act. But I think we should be adding something to our education system, talking about why we're removing these statues, particularly in a place like Harlem.
Thank you. Now, as representatives for your district, what do you believe your role is to discourage discrimination against marginalized communities such as immigrants, Muslims, LGBTQ individuals and people of color? Marvin Holland, let's start with you again.
That is a big role of the council person. When I leave here this morning, I'm going down to a rally for an immigrant, a Teamster, who was being deported from the country. I've had the support of a lot of people in the immigrant community because I've been fighting around these issues for a long time, as well as the LBGQ community. My son was a gay male and went to a black college and suffered a lot of abuse while he was in school. So, I understand these issues from a personal perspective. So, the role of the council person is to take a lead on these issues and be sort of the sounding board, the person who's out in front, the person with the blowhorn, the speaker that's talking about these issues and what's happening in the community around these issues.
Ms. Clear?
Certainly, we should be highlighting any form of injustice, whether it's immigrants, no matter what it is, we should be highlighting that. But education is very important as well, and at a young age, and for all children. You know, right now, in our schools, we're not teaching about black history, which is a large part of American history. It is American history. You have to be taught about immigrants. We need to know who we each other are. And I think that that starts at a young age, and it starts with education. It also starts with services that have to be available for people so they don't feel like they have to live in the shadows. All of us have to be understanding of this. I too have done extensive amount of work around immigrants and immigration and making sure that people understand that everyone has the right to be here and everyone can be here. So, we do have to, as a council person, we have to make sure that we take the lead, that we represent the image that we want people to follow and be inclusive and responsive to all.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
I agree with what my colleagues are saying, and my track record reflects our deep involvement with these immigrant issues and making sure that my office can be supportive or whatever other entities that we can bring to bear on their behalf is made available to them. I think it's a very interesting issue because this is an immigrant-born city, and that legacy is what, to some extent, makes this such a great city. And it has a responsibility to pay tribute to that by making sure that those doors that were open are not closed to anyone that wants to come again. So, we're very much in support of that, and that's a very significant part of our agenda. We're so happy, for instance, that we've seen so many folks coming from West Africa into our city and into our community and getting involved in civics and in the public school systems, so on and so forth. So, New York has been a treasure of opportunity for that kind of perspective, and I look forward to continuing to reinforce it and to enable others to come as well. Come one, come all.
Mr. Gray?
So, I would echo all of those on the stage. And obviously, in addition to the advocacy and that type of work, that it's also the role of the city council to pass legislation and laws that are going to protect those who have been discriminated against from that discrimination. And so, getting rid of stop and frisk, which allows for the discrimination of black and brown bodies here in New York, right, in terms of the allocation of certain laws and rules. Also, supporting legislation that would provide for sanctuary organizations to be able to continue to do that type of work. So, we know earlier this year, there was legislation passed that minimized the requirements of New York City to comply with some of the federal laws coming down from ICE in terms of gathering information on immigrants and things of that caliber. So, I think it's important for city council to be an advocate, both in the streets but also in the chambers, and making sure that laws reflect the diversity of New York City and protects everyone that contributes to this great city.
Mr. Tajadine?
Yes, we do have the ability to unite while still respecting each other's unique differences. A lot of times, it's the example that you live. So, as a city council person, and I am one that's very much in the community and I walk all over, when people see your example and they see that you're not discriminating against different groups, and sometimes you come, you encounter with people who will try to insinuate some type of discrimination, and so, when they see that you're resisting that, you know, you lead by example. But I just wanted to address the stop and frisk situation. I helped the NYPD form this neighborhood community policing program. And in the districts where this program is being implemented, stop and frisk has basically stopped. So, we have in the 2-Eighth, it's almost nonexistent; in the 32nd, it's nonexistent. And so, I'm... And so, it's just a person, sometimes you don't wait for someone to give you an assignment. You just take the lead.
Thank you. Now, several of you brought up police in, during this last question. And, you know, over the last few weeks and months, discussion about police community relations has really dropped off the radar with more talk about national issues and of Donald Trump and what that means to all of us and, and the issues that are affecting us with discrimination more on a national level and on immigration and whatnot. But what is happening with police and community relations in the district? And does it still need improvement? And how would you help to improve police community relations in the district? Let's start with Mr. Perkins.
Well, you know, Trumpism is not, you know, is, is not new to us. And in fact, when you talk about police community relations, Donald Trump's presence when he was so visible in New York City aggravated that. And now, he's our president. So, I wanna make sure that we don't forget who this person is as we've come to know him in, in the era of the Central Park Five, when five young people from our neighborhood were accused of a rape that they did not commit, but nevertheless, Donald Trump called for the return of the death penalty. That's the mentality of that Trumpism that we know and we must never forget. And I think that clearly, how we handle these local issues, especially around policing and especially around how our young people are treated in, in the public arena is, is very critical and still in need of reform and in, and in need of some vigilance on our part to make sure that they don't get subject to being accused of crimes that they didn't commit.
Mr. Holland?
I think there's always room for improvement on police relations. I do think that relations are rather well in Harlem as a whole, as the precincts are really trying to work and the police are working with the community. I think there needs to be more community policing. I was in, talking to Ms. Henry in Taft Houses and she, which one of the things she was saying was, I would like to see the patrols come back through the buildings like they were doing in the past and walk through the gardens of the, and the properties of the building. I also think that we need to take a look at who we're sending into our community as police officers. And one of the ideas that came up from one of, one of the, while out on the campaign was, perhaps the officers, before they come into the community or while they are in training, need to spend a few, a few weeks in our community as part of their training so they can get to know the community. Instead of people just being put into our community as police officers, they need to get to know the community a little better. I think it's happening, but I think we need more of that, more. Lastly, I would like to close with violence, crime is way down in New York. And all the credit is being given to the police and they deserve a great deal of credit. But what it's not talking is to the frontline people who are working in the cure violence programs to bring these down. So, they need more resources. And the one big thing we need is more jobs in the community for people. Thank you.
Ms. Claire?
I think perception is a big factor, the perception of law enforcement in communities when you're talking about community police relationships. And when you have these big issues, national issues that develop in our cities and across the country, there has to be justice. If I commit a murder, I need to be dealt with. I need to go to jail. And I think too often, recently, we're looking at these high-profile cases where black men in particular have been murdered and there are no ramifications. No one goes to jail. And I think that resonates with people in our communities locally who see themselves as, as Philando Castile, who see themselves as Eric Garner, who see themselves as Mike Brown, who see themselves as these people that these things are happening to. So, I think we have to deal with that. We also have to deal with, very simply, on a local level, you know, I've been attending a lot of block parties in the community, which is one of the greatest tools we have to build community. And many of them have complained about getting resistance from the local precincts to put these block parties together. I think this is an opportunity that our police can take advantage of. I think we should have block parties. Black parties are not the cause of problems. They're actually a great place where people come together and, and enjoy each other and come to know each other. And the police have an opportunity to engage there as well.
Thank you. Mr. Tajadeen?
Yes, so I, I am happy to say that I did help create the Neighborhood Coordinating Officer Community Policing Program that's now citywide. And, you know, that gives me a different perspective because I'm very engaged still with the program and, and its development and so forth. But a lot of times, people don't fully understand that community policing also means that the citizen has to really police whatever's going on. So, if you're gonna give a block party, then it's your job to basically police that block party. If you let it get out of hand, if you let infiltrators come in or interlopers come into your, into your block party and start trouble, now when it falls apart, you wanna blame the police. So, in precinct 28 in Harlem, we have an opportunity to really engage in how we're going to police our neighborhoods. You could call Inspector Christoph McIntosh and he welcomes any ideas from the community. And we just collaborated on something to get rid of a problem on 125th Street a couple of weeks ago. And we don't have to tell people what we did, but we successfully got rid of that problem by community engagement.
All right. Mr. Gray?
I would say that there's some problems that we have to sit down and brainstorm and come up with solutions for. And then there are other problems where I feel like the blueprint is already there. So, we recently had the passage of the Community Safety Act that provides more transparency for police actions. It calls for a external review force that looks at police actions. Also, we know that they have the National Night Out and they have programs that are already implemented that facilitate the type of community policing that we want. And we have legislation that helps to minimize and, and alleviate some of the issues that, that are concerns. And so, it's really just a matter of a city councilperson advocating for the community, pushing these particular pieces of legislation that are already in place, holding the mayor accountable to his promise to have body cameras on all police within the next year or two. And so, I think it's just a matter of doing that work and keeping, keeping that conversation going.
Ms. Claire, did you have something to add?
Just that in Harlem in particular, you know, there's another concern that I run into all the time. And there has to be trust between the police and the residents of the community and the existing residents. Gentrification has caused, caused some tensions between residents who have expressed that they feel that the police protect or come to serve just one group of people. So, we really have to look at those little small details, which are not so small, and we have to make sure everybody feels that they are a part of the community and a part of the policing.
All right, thank you. Now, you know, an issue that still plagues our communities is, is youth violence and also summer youth programs for jobs. So, that goes into budgeting, that goes into summer youth employment, and it goes into violence. How do they all play in together and how do we resolve these issues? And, and what are your ideas? Let's start with Mr. Holland.
Thank you. One of the things that we wanted to do this summer, but we weren't able to do, hopefully we would be able to do it next summer, was to have a camp. We have some property upstate, one of the churches owns, and we wanted to take some of the kids out of the neighborhood, some of the most dangerous youth who, we know who they are. I work with a, a lot of them. And so, we wanted to have this camp where they can go up and learn a skilled trade over the summer with the building trade unions. So, hopefully, we'll have this in place next year. As I said earlier, what people want are jobs and they want good quality jobs. So, if we're not working towards bringing good quality jobs to Harlem, then none of this is, all of, all of this work is gonna be in vain. I, I talk to almost every day people about youth violence and, and I spend a lot of my time dealing with this population. And they, it comes back to the same things, we gotta find employment.
All right, Mr. Gray?
So, I actually agree with that fundamental premise that we have to provide jobs for individuals so that they have something to work forward to and they have something to invest in. Fortunately, we do have programs in Harlem already, individuals who are working on job training and who are attempting to do that type of work. And oftentimes, they just don't have the support from the government, they don't have the funding to help those programs become more viable. We know that the Adult Learning Center in Harlem has a program that helps teach HVAC trade. And the program was not able to run because they weren't able to find a professor. It's a free program paid for by the city, but they weren't able to find a professor for that program. And so, having the infrastructure and having individuals in place to help those who are already doing that type of work and then also creating jobs. So, I think that we can create green jobs in Harlem. There's no reason that we don't have a microgrid. There's no reason we're not installing solar panels. There's no reason that we're not creating opportunities for individuals to learn skills and apply them right there at home and benefit Harlem.
Mr. Tajadeen?
Well, I'm a product of the Job Corps. And the way Job Corps operated some years back, many of the people that went to Job Corps were sort of forced to go to Job Corps. So, they had an opportunity to either go to Job Corps in a more structured, you know, facility or go to jail. I came up with an idea a while back called Probation Plus. And you make the, the parent and the, the child that's facing, you know, charges, you have to go to some type of camp. So, I like Mr. Holland's idea about having a camp, but some, we can sort of like maybe twist the arm of that individual to make that person go to camp. And when I went to Job Corps, you know, it was a very rewarding experience. So, it's, once you get them out of this environment, they can change. And that's the whole thing, getting them out of this environment to let them see another part of life. So, that's kind of like my vision and I think I could do that legislatively.
Mr. Perkins?
You know, we historically in this city have had a, a vision of making sure that young people were given opportunities for making some money legally, summer jobs, summer youth programs that, that engage them with sometimes the corporate sector, business sector. And I think that we need to go back to go forward in terms of making sure that as we do our council work, as we do our city budget work, that there are priorities representing the needs of young people in terms of employment opportunities as well as other kinds of opportunities. So, I think that there's an urgency to that because I don't think that the young people today feel the same sense of commitment on the part of government in terms of making sure that they have employment opportunities available to them.
Ms. Claire?
I agree with all that was said about our employment opportunities, other opportunities for young people to get away. But I would only add to that, that we must increase entrepreneurial opportunities for our young people so that they can understand how they can take their talent and brand their product or their talent or whatever it is they have. We have a lot of artists, fashion designers, musical artists and others who just need that technical support and need the way to get there. And when you talk about gun violence, you have to talk about our efforts to continue to get these guns off the streets and out of the hands of children. They shouldn't be out here and we have to continue to do that nationally and locally. And in addition to that, we do have to make sure we support mental health services. A lot of this is stemming from people who need counseling and other, other types of supports and services that are not being provided. We have to support those organizations and make sure that people are getting the help that they need.
All right, thank you. Now, as more and more residential buildings are being built in the district and the population grows and a lot more families are moving into Harlem, as a council member, how do you plan to help prevent overcrowding in the schools? Let's start with Mr. Perkins.
First, there's no guarantee that more families moving in are going to necessarily aggravate the overcrowding per se. Because my observation is that we're not having the size of families that we've had in the past, number one. Number two, I think that obviously, if there is the need for more facilities, more buildings, then through the council and through state government, we should be able to get the resources to accommodate that need. But I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that that need is being aggravated in a significant way by virtue of, of the population explosion that people claim is taking place and, and it's particularly in terms of the numbers of young people that are education, public school, education ready.
All right, Mr. Holland?
We have to look at the school system and, and just improve the school system overall. I think a lot of people are moving into Harlem, but they're not sending their, their children to school, certainly not to the local schools, because we still have the most segregated school system or the second most segregated school system in the country. So, clearly, these people are moving in, but they're not necessarily gonna send their school, their, their children to the district schools. One of the complaints I'm hearing from a lot of parents who moved into Harlem is that they're thinking about moving out because they, they, they don't like the schools in Harlem. And so, they can't afford to send their kids to private schools. So, they're trying to figure out what to do with their children. So, we have to fix the overall school system in Harlem, whether it's the charter school, district school. We have to focus on fixing the schools. And certainly, we need to put some more schools in Harlem because the co-location situation is out of control where they're mingling and mixing different age groups of, and students into schools and that's not healthy. So, we have to look at the, the school system holistically and fix both the district schools and the charter schools and make sure our school system is working.
Mr. Tajadeen?
Well, there's a problem of, you know, systematically, gentrification does mean pushing people out to bring a new gentry in. And so, that even falls onto a school. So, I've been involved in different fights trying to keep schools opened, which I, I've succeeded in doing that. But, you know, it's never like you can put your feet up on a desk and relax and say you won the battle. You have to keep on being diligent. So, we have these, you know, we face these scams where, you know, schools, our district schools are being threatened with closure for, to make room for this new gentry. That's a problem. It's not so much overcrowded. It's overcrowded if you allow just people just to come and there's no room for them. And then you try to push other people out, you build high. So, you're trying to, you have to stop those things first. Stop those things and it won't really be a problem. But as long as they're just coming in with no way to, to manage them, to move them around the city and you're building high and you're not thinking about anything, then it becomes a problem. So, it all works in together.
Ms. Claire?
I think that we have to address the quality of education in our schools overall. I don't think there is an overcrowding problem in our schools, our traditional public schools. And one way to, if there is, to stop that is definitely to stop these co-locations where they continuously move charter schools into buildings and disrupt what's going on there. We need to focus on bringing our schools up to a standard that every parent would wanna send their child there. And that's what we have not dealt with. I'm not afraid, the only gentrification of, of schools that's happening right now to me is, is the charter school movement that has practically housed itself in every single traditional public school in Harlem, unlike any other neighborhood, where this is not happening like that at that rate. There is a huge amount of charter schools and some buildings, more than one in our charters, in our, in our traditional public school buildings. Like was said earlier, I think that we need to bring a standard of education up for everyone. The gentry will wanna go there, the residents will be happy to have their children there. We just have to keep fighting for better standards for everyone and we have to get those CFE dollars.
Mr. Gray?
So, I'll say this, two things. So, we do know statistically that Harlem schools are overcrowded, overcrowded, but they are less overcrowded than other schools. So, they're on the low end of being overcrowded. I think that the entry of, of new individuals is only going to exacerbate that. But the issue is less about the overcrowding and more about the fact that public schools specifically are tasked to teach all learning styles, ESLs, you name it. And so, oftentimes, while smaller class sizes are helpful, it's the strategies that teachers are able to implement that really is going to make the difference. And again, I'm talking, I went to public school, so I'm thinking specifically of public school. I taught in public school. We know that charters are able to select and deselect, but it's the public schools with the teachers who have five, six, seven different learning styles in one classroom that becomes a challenge. And we need to, one, invest in either new schools, we need to renovate the schools that we have so that the spaces are serving multiple purposes. And then also, we need to invest in the type of training that teachers are able to do their job more effectively.
Thank you. And then this is a question I'm just gonna ask all of you and we're just gonna go right down the line on this one. go right down the line on this one. Where do you stand on mayoral control of the New York City public schools? Mr. Tajadeen?
Well, I'm not a big fan of it. I do think that communities' school boards should come back. I do believe in self-determination. I think that the city's too large really for mayoral control, and if the communities kind of, the districts govern themselves somewhat, I mean, you do have, you have to answer to someone, like the Commissioner of Education, but I do believe in self-determination. And I think that it would involve more stakeholders if you did it that way. Right now, the stakeholders, they're limited. It's too, you know, in the opposite direction.
Mr. Gray?
So I think this comes back to my fundamental view of democracy and engagement and participation. And so I think that neighborhoods, parents, communities should have a voice in the school systems and the school districts, and so I think that we should have school boards and not in favor of mayoral control.
Mr. Perkins?
I think mayoral control has not proven itself. And I think that what we've had in the past in terms of community participation, parent participation, has been aggravated by this process and that we need to go back to go forward in terms of providing more opportunity for other types of participation that doesn't allow mayoral control to turn out to be mayoral dictatorship.
Ms. Claire?
I believe in the public's participation in public education. As someone who sat on a school board for eight years and the CEC for two years as the president of the CEC, I think that it was a much better thing when the communities and parents had the opportunity to have a bigger say in what happened to their children. Who better, who better than parents and grandparents and others in the community, the original stakeholders, to say what their children need, what their schools need, and to participate in governing the education system in the districts?
Mr. Holland?
I have great problems with mayoral control. When the previous mayor was in office, that is when we were, all the charter schools were allowed to move into Harlem because of mayoral control. And now we have this mayor, and the reason, the problem I have with mayoral control is that it now makes education a political issue. So now you see the standards being lowered for teachers because a deal was made in Albany to allow this to happen for the charter schools, that they would lower the standards so they could continue and extend mayoral control for two years. And so the problem with mayoral control in concept, it can be okay, but the way it's being done and used as a political tool for the charter schools and the district schools, I think is what's raising havoc on our schools, particularly in District Five in Harlem and throughout District Nine.
All right, now we're going to have a very quick lightning round, yes or no answers only, please, starting with Mr. Holland and going straight down the line. Do you support congestion pricing?
Yes.
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 No.
Have you served on a community board? If yes, which one? Starting with Tajadeen.
Committees on the community boards, nine, and community board 10.
No.
Yes.
No.
Served and appointed people to the community board.
No.
Yes, community board 11.
Would you have town hall meetings if elected?
Absolutely.
Yes.
As always.
Most definitely.
Yes, I've done them now, even not elected.
Yes.
All right, on November 7th this year, every New Yorker will be asked to vote yes or no in a constitutional convention to amend New York State Constitution. If a voter asked you about this, what would you tell them and why? Which is not actually a yes or no question, but what do you, would you vote for a constitutional convention? Starting with Mr. Tajadeen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, because I believe...
Yes or no question?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
No.
Thank you very much. We are now going to go to the closing statements. Each candidate will have up to one minute, and we will start with you, Mr. Holland.
Thank you again for having me here today. I think the question we have to ask ourselves in this race is, can we make our Harlem a zone of opportunity? Can we make Harlem where every family has a stake in their future? Can we make Harlem united again? And can we make Harlem a high-tech center? Can we achieve urban farming status in Harlem? My name is Marvin Holland, and I would like for the community to join me in my campaign, vote for me on September 12th, a new day in Harlem politics. Thank you.
Ms. Claire?
As we welcome the new to Harlem, the new opportunities, the new people, I'm committed to not overlooking those who stayed in Harlem when it wasn't a good place to be, who fought to preserve it, who kept it, who fought for better things to come to the community. I want to recognize the fact that those people are still here and create opportunity for them to remain. I don't think they benefited as much as they should have. These are the people who held our community down, who made sure that we kept our buildings, who made sure that we kept our schools, and now it's almost like they are being punished, almost like we're saying, "Now, we're finished with you, and you're priced out, and you can't stay here." And I think that's wrong, and I don't think it's necessary, and at the same time, we can certainly have new people come. I would like to bring the perspective of a woman to this council seat. I am the only woman running, I'm the only woman up here, and I think that it is time, it is time for that change. A recent report released by the City Council Women's Caucus shows the declining number of women in the city council, and it's expected to go even lower in the upcoming election. I want to represent Harlem, I want to make sure everybody gets fed, and I want to bring my skills that I've learned over the years to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Well, first I want to thank you and my colleagues on the dais for the opportunity to have a discussion about the city council and city government. I want to thank my constituency for the years of support that you've given me to represent you. I look forward to the continuation of that support, continuation of the agenda that we have represented over the years in a successful way. And I think that this is a very important time for Harlem and for the communities like Harlem, and the kind of leadership that we have been able to provide, I think is strong enough to help us not only sustain what we've done, but go even further in terms of addressing the immediate concerns of families in this community, especially when it comes to public education, and especially when it comes to public transportation. We look forward to continuing to serve. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Well, thank you again, Eleanor and Eminem, for this opportunity to be a part of the discussion. Let me just say that I'm extremely grateful to just be able to run for this office. Fundamentally, I am a Duian, so I believe in democracy. I believe that if we participate in this process, we can make this process work for us. And so I would simply ask everyone to please, please, please come out September 12th. So many people have paid for us to have the opportunity to be able to vote, and so to come out, make your voice heard, make your vote count. And I often say the only thing better than a vote is an informed vote, and you don't have to have a PhD or a JD to be informed. You can walk outside and look around your neighborhood, you can look at businesses that have closed, you can look at your condo bill, or look at your lease agreement, or look at, you know, your neighbors and the street corner, and you can be informed. And after that research, if you decide that everything is great and you don't want changes, then on September 12th, you should vote for the status quo. But if, like me, you think that Harlem can do better, I ask that you would vote for change, vote for the first name on the ballot, Tyson Lord Gray. Help me make Harlem better for those that live here and stronger for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tajadeen?
Thank you, Eleanor. I think the areas that most, that concern our community the most is, are the areas are housing, jobs, education, and crime. I've clearly have been the frontrunner in doing things in these areas very successfully. I was very involved in the 125th Street zoning, the Columbia Expansion Plan, and I gained major benefits for the Ninth Council District. In education, I was the forerunner in slowing down charter school invasions. With crime, instead of talking about crime and stop and frisk, I came up with a solution that could slow it down, and in our communities, it has slowed down. So I think with that track record of doing all these things without being elected or holding a public office, I think that it's time that I take this seat, and I could do much more. So on September 12th, I'm asking for your vote. Vote for someone who has a proven track record of doing things. Vote for Julius Tajadeen.
I want to thank all the candidates for being here today and participating in today's debate. The primary elections will be held on Tuesday, September 12th. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, L W V N Y C dot org. Please remember, only voters enrolled in a political party having a primary may vote in the primary election on September 12th. Thank you for watching Race to Represent on Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Goodbye.